All right, well, welcome everyone to the Byron Hills November 2nd Board Meeting. Sorry that we were late. We were in executive session where we discuss certain items that are appropriate, like for instance, when we discuss contracts, or when we discuss litigation, or matters like that. And I just wanted, for the record state that we talked about 2.1 negotiation matters, BHTA, 2.2 Board of Education matters, succession planning. We did not yet get to 2.3, 2.4, but we knew we had guests and wanted to not make you wait, and we'll go back into executive session at the end of the meeting. So with that, I would just ask for everybody to rise for pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need a bigger flag. This is under space to us.
I know.
It's in the corner.
It takes a second just to figure out where it is.
Yeah, there it is.
All right, well, with that, we go to item four. Any comments from the public tonight regarding any item that's not on tonight's agenda?
Can I give information about what how long?
Yep, yep, I will. Okay, excellent. Let me just read you just our protocols, just to give everybody a sense of how we organize this. You can obviously speak as soon as you recognize it. You can absolutely speak first. We welcome any comments, and we'll be listening carefully. As I think we've talked about at prior board meetings, it's not the right forum for debate back and forth, but if you don't hear us respond, it's not because we don't care, we're not listening, we absolutely do, but just because we're here to listen. And also, to the extent that you ever do want to have more discussions, as Jen mentioned last time, we're always available for that discussion on other forums as well. We ask that, you know, we try to keep the overall public comment session to 20 minutes, and each person has three minutes to speak, just because we have a mountain of business to get through tonight, and then go back into executive session. But with that, we absolutely welcome your comments and want to hear what you have to say, so I'm going to go over to you. And if you could just maybe start by stating your name and just your address, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Is this right? Can you hear me?
You don't have to.
No. I'll just use my auditory voice. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gani Barknare. How are you? Good evening. My question was in regards to the news that we see over the rest of the country, not necessarily here. And that news has to do with the curriculum that's being taught in schools, whether that be all the new catchphrases and things that's going on, whether that's CRT, the 1619, whether that's the sex education at varying different levels of age groups. I was curious, does Byron Hills have some sort of information that parents can view and see that kind of gets them educated on what the school district is actually doing in regards to those things?
So while this isn't a question and answer, we have a very easy answer for you, and Dr. Colton Ecker will get that information to you. He'll reach out to you.
Perfect.
But it isn't a question and answer, but I know the answer, so I can.
I appreciate it.
I'll reach out to you. Where do I find that?
There you go.
Breaking protocol. Did you ever think that would happen?
No.
We were 12, and I was 17.
All right.
You'll pick up.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Follow the suit.
My name is Jessica Di Matteo.
Just need you to raise your voice just a touch, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's all right. You're behind a mask, too. It's not even.
My name is Jessica Di Matteo. I have two children in the school system. Very grateful to be here and for everything you all do. This is an issue that I just needed to come and speak about. Children are resilient. They bounce back. They're fine. We tell ourselves, we tell them. Except therapist's office are filled with adults trying to overcome unresolved issues from the childhood adolescence. I feel our children are not resilient. I feel they're innocent and obedient, and they're trusting, and they're pure, and they are social. They look to us, their teachers and their parents, to model and provide what to do in these times. They understand the word pandemic. They understand fear and stay safe, and we mask them. We cover their smiles. We shush their laughter. We literally silence their singing, and we mask them. Isolation is the new norm. Womp as students sit at lunch, their only social period, single desks facing the wall at each back of each other's heads, while at upper schools, they can face each other and sit together. Teachers and aides have become consumed with proper masking etiquette. Corporal punishment, unfortunately, and shaming have returned to the classroom, and I know this personally. Last year's gym teacher issued push-ups for the entire class if one student, including my son, had his mask under his nose in an attempt to breathe properly. Last month, my son was instructed to sit in the hallway and be left out of an encore singing performance for another class because he pulled his mask and let it snap back. And when another teacher saw him and asked what happened, he was told, "The teacher really hates when kids play with their mask." I've asked his teacher in September and again last week for mask breaks because he gets severe stomach aches, and his behavior is worsening. I was told he must ask for them, and they're no more than three minutes. When I asked what happens after the three minutes is up, she said, "We have to stay safe, and he can't have a mask break longer than that." If he forgets to ask for it, he cannot just take one. If he does get one, an aide will walk him into the hallway so he can breathe fresh air safely. I was told they need to stay six feet apart to be safe. Safety is all they hear, but I feel these babies are mentally suffering. Snack is silent or quiet. Lunch is at a desk alone. Children are reprimanded over masking, and these rules are inconsistent, in my opinion, and not necessarily based on science. I am grateful to the staff for giving what they can, that they are in school full-time, and for the attempts at normal, so I silence my concern and heartbreak as our children silence theirs, and I hope for normal.
Hi, my name is Allison Miller. I have two kids in the district. Actually, one just went to college. There's only one kid left in the district. I, too, am grateful to be here, and I'm grateful for all of you for being here and listening to us and letting us speak. I am here to stand up for our kids. I am here because we all know that masking our kids with no end in sight is just plain wrong. It's time to fight for our kids' mental and physical health. Why isn't anyone researching the long-term effect of masking these children? If masks are so great, why not let the teachers wear them? The teachers can make the decision to get vaccinated and wear masks. Our kids should be able to breathe freely. The teachers are almost all vaccinated as well. And in the high school, most of, I think it's 86% I think was the last thing I read, the kids are all vaccinated, or 86% vaccinated. So why is masks still an issue? Why isn't anyone testing kids to see if they are suffering emotionally, physically, breathing, asthma, a whole host of issues that come from these masks? Why isn't anyone doing a study on how kids have difficulty learning while wearing a mask, especially those kids with special needs? Why hasn't anyone tested the ventilation system to see if it is sufficient, along with social distancing? Those two data points could be enough to get rid of the masks. They should be enough. No one's ever tested this. They put all the things together and said that the masks have to be, but maybe they don't. Maybe there should be a research on that. The masks that stifle their breathing for seven to nine hours a day, sometimes more, depending on after-school activities and busing, which has totaled almost 2,000 hours since the start of this, has no definitive proof of working also. The CDC initially said that the kids don't need to wear masks at school. Why doesn't anyone ask the question that why that was changed? In the meantime, our kids who are at the lowest risk have to wear masks every day, all day. Yet, they go to their friend's house after school, they go to parties, they go to sports, and somehow they don't get COVID. Enough is enough. It's time to start fighting for our kids' well-being. Nobody knows what the long-term effect will be. It's time to start researching that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. My name is Ferri Albotora. I'm a mother of three children in the school district, seventh grader, sixth grader, and third grade. And I'm as well very grateful to be here, and I want to commend you all for getting our kids back in school in person. It was very much needed for mental health and any other, all the other reasons as well for them to come back in school in person. There's one matter I want to bring to your attention today. Like few parents here tonight, I'm concerned about my kids wearing a mask all day long without a break. My sixth grader has been complaining every day about migraines and headaches. I took him twice to the doctor, and initially, we thought he didn't drink enough water and so on and so forth. And I think we just stumbled into the fact that I was convinced that they were having mask breaks. And then the doctor started asking him questions, and he was told, he told her, "We don't have mask breaks. The only break I have is when I go to the restroom." So my oldest one is actually, he gives himself these mask breaks from time to time. But my sixth grader, he's very by the book, and he doesn't really, he keeps the mask down in his face. So I'm here to bring this to your attention. It's really concern for us as parents, and I look forward to hearing from you, hearing from you, if the school is going to do anything about that. What is also the plan to phase out the mask as perhaps members go down? I mean, we're anxious as parents to have our kids live a certain normal life, interacting with other kids, seeing each other smile, joke, and so on and so forth. So thank you very much for hearing us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Esposito. I have one child left in the district, and I just have a small comment this morning. My son came home from school, got sent home from school from the nurse because he had the sniffles. And I said, "Did you have your mask on?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "Well, then, what's the purpose of the mask? Are we sending them home, or are we keeping them in school if they're wearing a mask?" If they're going to send them home with the sniffles, take the masks off them. At least there's a reason or an excuse. But as long as they're going to be masked all day, if they don't feel well, there's really no reason then to send them home if they're wearing a mask. So that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cliff Perrin. I have actually two kids in the school district. One's in first grade and one's in seventh grade, and time has gone by so fast. They really enjoy their time here. And, you know, as I listen around the room here, first of all, I also want to thank you everyone for coming today. I think it shows a little courage and it shows interest in that our kids need to be safe, and, you know, it's great that you're bringing up your concerns. And so, you know, we are teaching our kids that, you know, listen, we have to wear masks, we have all these different rules, and, you know, I hear you. It sounds like, you know, sometimes the rules are applied inconsistently. And so the real question that I want to ask is, you know, we're never going to get to a point where we're going to know all the answers for everything. It just, the world doesn't work that way. I wish it did. But, you know, we are a group of educators. We want to, you know, set rules. We want to figure out, you know, we want to grade people. You know, when kids go to school, they get, you know, A, B, or C, whatever. There's a rule of the road here. And so I think what I'm hearing from a lot of the group here is quite simply, we want to hear from you. You know, at what point do we get where we can say masks are no longer going to be necessary? I don't have the perfect answer for you, but I would like to, you know, have you at least think about this. And we also understand there's a limit to how much you can do. And, you know, I would ask you as parents and people who are concerned about our kids, that you also do the pushback up the chain, because we understand decisions happen locally, but they also happen from above, top-down. So the reality is, we would love to know what's the end game? What's the point that we can tell our kids, "Look, when we hit this particular level, you know what? We're going to make the decision where it's safe or safe enough," and, you know, just like, you know, driving a car, the speed limit. If we decide to, you know, lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, I am sure we'll cut down the number of car crashes and accidents. But we, as a society, have decided, on highways, it can be 55, or some places you can go 65, we've made that decision that, you know, at certain points, we're willing to take the risk for the benefits. And we have, you know, parents here who raise their concerns about their children. You know, mine, you know, the youngest one, you know, he doesn't like wearing a mask. It's hard for him, and it's hard to understand, "Why am I doing this all the time?" And he also complains, "I'm not getting a lot of mask breaks." So this seems to be a consistent theme of not having the mask breaks. So I want bigger picture. Mask breaks, want to be able to have them more often. I think our kids deserve them, and not to be shamed for it for asking. But the reality is, bigger picture, we want to know, when can we get to the end game? And I present that to you, and hopefully we hear back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Steve Yola. I really don't have anything specifically prepared to speak about, but I can't believe that we're still at this point. I mean, when the pandemic was new, you know, everything was uncertain, and that was one thing. It's just real disappointing that we're at the point that we are at now, and we know the numbers. It seems like this whole thing's just turned into a big political game, and our kids are paying a price as political pawns. You know, I understand everybody here is in a tough position in just, you know, obeying the orders that they're given. But, you know, like, we haven't been showing any efficiency, efficacy, or safety studies on mask, like, long-term mask wearing, like eight hours a day for young children, four, five, six, seven, eight years old. And it's very, very concerning as a parent, knowing that the people that are supposed to be, you know, we're trusting to look after our kids are not asking these questions at least. Or I'm sure you are, but like, where are the studies? You know, we've been told there are not. There are not, but we have to enforce what we're told. So that's the most concerning thing to me as a parent, because I see the job you do at the school, and I feel very fortunate to be here, and you do an excellent job with the school. So I got to give you that. But this whole mask thing is very concerning, given the fact that there's no, there's nothing that we seem to be going off of, and it seems to be very detrimental. I know I have my son, and I'm having a very, very hard time with. We put him back, we had to take him out in the pandemic. We put him in last year. His whole class was wearing masks, and for two months, he stood in a corner of the wall, a corner of the room facing the wall, afraid to go back into the, sit down with his other classmates. And the year before we took him out, it took maybe two weeks for him to get used to being in the classroom, but after that, he was fine. So, I mean, this is what I see personally, and it has a very strong effect on me, and I'd like to see, you know, some reasoning behind this at this point. It's just, it's going on too long. It's too long. We need some answers.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is that everybody?
Good afternoon.
I just wanted one more comment.
Yeah.
Sorry, it looks like I had a lot to say. You know, we got to speak while you guys were in executive session, so we got to speak amongst ourselves, and I think a lot of us touched on a lot of different subjects, and we all share the same, we all share tidbits of each other's, and we all share each other's viewpoints on what everyone has brought up. So even though someone didn't talk about it, you know, from our talks prior, I kind of feel like we were on the same page. But I also know from the talks before that we were extremely proud, and I know I was amazed at how you guys ran everything last year. I mean, hats off to all of you.
Yes.
You guys, you went from trying something completely new, and by the third day, like, you had it down pat, and it was awesome the rest of the year. At least you made it seem like it was awesome. There's probably a lot of scrambling behind the scenes, but, you know, I think I myself was very impressed by the intelligence and ingenuity and execution of how you took our school district last year above and beyond what everyone else was doing. I mean, I, again, hats off to all of you. And I think what kind of what we were touching on was, we're hoping that you flex those mental muscles again this year to help take us again, right, above and beyond what everyone else is doing. Because I know you guys have it in you because of what you did last year. Last year was amazing, and kind of we're looking towards you to kind of help us and take us and our kids to that next level as well, too. So thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for, you know, the dialogue, because I feel like we are blessed in this community to have civil, reasonable dialogue, and I listened to everything everyone had to say, and I appreciate all of it. You know, the one thing, without again breaking the rules of, without getting into debate, but just to let you know, because it's important that you do know this, is that, I mean, certainly, you know, we share your concern that we, it would be, it would be important to have more guidance from the state health professionals around what is the end game with masks, because it's a very reasonable question, based on where we are in the pandemic. And we've not only asked that question, but also have worked through our networks, because there's always strength in numbers when you approach the state. So as you can imagine, there are other districts that are, you know, asking the same question. And so, you know, through whether it's the superintendent's associations, or the associations of the school board members, trying to, you know, do as much as we can to ask those questions and get those answers, some type of metrics or guideposts or guidance that we can then communicate to the community. And certainly, if we had any of that, we would communicate it, but we don't yet, and we won't, you know, we won't rest until we get it. So that's something that I just wanted you to know. But all of these things that you brought up tonight are important. We know that it comes from a good place in terms of caring about your kids and the kids in the community. And so, you know, we've all listened, and it's very helpful. So thank you for being here and sharing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you could stay and see my COVID numbers if you really want. Or you can watch me on TV later. It will be recorded. No, you don't have to stay.
You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to, Gani. No harm either way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for such respectful dialogue. I mean it. It means so much to us. And this is a little sidebar conversation, but many of the parents who are out here have been meeting together for a very long time and trying to organize presentations for Shelley Mayer and the Westchester County Department of Health. And I've enjoyed your collaboration and working in a school district like this that has such a respectful dialogue and such intelligent parents who care so much about their kids. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Right back to you.
All right, we're going to go to.
One of you has to stay. I don't care.
No, no. You're the last one. You're the last one. No, we're just. I just might stay.
Have a great night.
Good night, guys. Thank you. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask for.
Thank you.
She would stay, too.
A motion to approve the consent agenda. Item six, personnel, seven, special services. Oh, wait, no, sorry, sorry, sorry. I went too fast. Motion to adopt tonight's agenda. Second. All in favor? Then, motion to approve the consent agenda. Item six, personnel, seven, special services, and eight businesses. All in favor? All right, we go to policies.
All right.
Thanks. There's, it's a three, one policy, actually, two policy areas. So Gina will talk about the first one, and then I'll talk about the data policy.
Sure. I'm going to give an update on policy 1530. That's entitled Smoking Tobacco Use and Use of Smoking Devices on School Premises. This was revised and adopted just in 2018, but we were required to update it to include new information. So as we know, smoking of all kinds is prohibited on our school grounds, in any vehicle that transports children or personnel, and in our district buildings. But the definition of smoking has now been expanded to include cannabis or cannabinoid hemp. Additionally, it also includes now that ingesting cannabis or concentrated cannabis of any kind is also prohibited on school grounds and on our school buses. But it's important to note that this policy does not apply to those individuals where medical cannabis has been prescribed to them by a doctor. There is a process for that. The process is that you would be prescribed. We actually did some research. We looked into this. You are prescribed that by a doctor. The doctor then certifies that prescription, and then you are on a registration in the state to have had that prescription filled. However, even if you are prescribed that, and it's medical cannabis that you've prescribed, it's smoking fashion, you still are unable to smoke on campus where this, you know, policy would be in effect, any school grounds or school buses. So it's important to note that, that even though you're certified and registered, it doesn't mean that you can smoke cannabis, medical cannabis, on school grounds. And then just our requirement that we're obligated to post this information in any school district building and any transportation vehicle.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? And then there's two addendums for data privacy policy. The first one is a third-party contractor supplement, and then the second one is a bill of rights for data privacy. I'll talk about the bill of rights first. That just has one change to the bullet, as you see in the track changes, and that was a clarification only. It was confusing the way the bullet was written, in that it is restricting schools and third-party vendors from marketing or commercial purposes. And that wasn't quite accurate in the way the bullet was written. So that was just a clarification of this policy. This was just recently adopted just in 2020. And then on the data privacy and security, every third-party contractor needs to complete this, and this is overseen by our data privacy team. Andrew Taylor leads. And this form that we had created in 2020 was a bit confusing, and some vendors were leaving out some of the inserts there. So we wanted just to have one place where they insert their name, and the rest just refers to the above vendor, and then we put a date on it. And because we're not having the vendor sign this every single year, we have too many vendors to do that, we're just having them sign it once, and then having the termination date either when the contract is ended, or when, within 16 days of written notice. And then we put the start date on this contract. So it makes the process a little more streamlined.
I'm going to move to approve the bill of rights as a first read, and the contractor supplement as a first read, and just also let the record reflect that the approval we gave to policy 1530 was also as a first read.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks for the policy work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Tim, you're still on, right?
Now.
Already.
New business.
And test results?
New business.
Is it?
Professional learning plans.
Professional learning plan first, okay. So just a brief presentation. You have this presentation attached. Also, you have our PD plan, the new updated professional learning plan, attached to your packet as well. I want to thank the committee, who I meet with annually to review this and update this document. So New York State has requirements that their district needs to approve a professional development plan every year and certify that we have one that's been adopted, and we did do that this year. The plan there, I listed my presentation slides, what the plan must contain, and you'll see that each of these elements are in the plan. And our goal for professional development is to continuously improve professional collaboration and always focusing teacher learning on enhancing student learning in the classroom. We do it by utilizing our continuous improvement model, by having a professional practice focused on collaboration, by as much as we can embedding professional learning into the teacher's regular work life. That has the highest impact on teacher growth is by making it embedded, and not just, for example, to contrast that with a one-shop workshop. You go to a workshop once, and you never really talk about it again. High-quality professional learning, when I'm evaluating professional learning in the district, focus on three areas. Effective administrative teacher leadership, I'll focus on one area, that we're using data to promote collaborative inquiry with teachers. So teachers come around, they look at student learning data, and says, "Oh, we really need to improve this area." So we let the data drive the areas of professional focus, not just on a whim, what we think is fashionable at the time. Job embedded, meaning that we're really embedding this in real-time reflection for teachers. So as they're learning, they're using those practices in the classroom and seeing the impact on kids and refining it as they go through it. And then having a professional learning community within our departments, within our grade-level teams, focusing again on student learning to be the focus. It's not just what I might want to learn because I want to learn it as a teacher, but what really does have an impact, and then what are those research-based professional development approaches that impact student learning. And I've reviewed this with you before in terms of the curriculum review cycle. It follows our continuous improvement cycle. Phase one is the study and plan. When we're looking at any new curriculum, we study it, look at research-based programs. We bring in, we'll look at it from multiple points of view from different stakeholders. We'll implement it, and we will monitor that implementation process. We evaluate the implementation in the first year by surveying kids, looking at the. We bring in, we'll look at it from multiple points of view from different stakeholders. We'll implement it, and we will monitor that implementation process. We evaluate the implementation in the first year by surveying kids, looking at the impact on student learning, by talking to teachers about it. And then in phase four, revise and refining our plan, making any adjustments to implementing any new curriculum. Do we need to change the timeline? Do we need to change staff development around it? And then depending on how that phase four goes, we may continue that cycle a few times. If you look at our mathematics curriculum, we're now in our third, fourth year of our new math program, K5, and we're still making adjustments to the professional development. Got interrupted with COVID, but we're constantly evaluating how that's going, what our needs are going forward. And some examples, I'll just point out the second one there, embedded instructional coaching on the use of time. We offered a four-week workshop this summer for middle and high school teachers to focus on instructional practices and longer blocks of time. And now we have coaching this year as well, where teachers during their prep periods can meet with one of those coaches. We have two coaches working with us who work with teachers to talk about strategies to use. And teachers will come in, they'll work on lessons, the coach will talk to them about possible strategies, and then the teacher does it in the classroom and then meets with that staff developer again. And this is, teachers are giving me really good feedback on this because it's, again, embedded in our practice day-to-day.
It's like the Joe Bowler work with the math.
Right.
The rich tasks.
Exactly. The rich tasks. We're doing it around the use of time as well. So that is our professional development plan, which.
Tim, can you go back to the graphic of the reflector find revised?
Yeah.
In the upper right-hand corner. This is what I love. Tim doesn't just decide, well, we're going to like measure things differently. In all of the years I've known you, I think since 2003, everything is evaluated using that, right? That is the process for every single thing that we do. And I think that that consistency has been so successful for you with the math program at the high school, with the investigations program at the elementary school, with professional learning for IDE, the development of rich tasks. Everything follows that same pattern. And just kudos to you for never being lured by shiny objects. And that you feel something else should happen because the greatest progress has happened with using that same model for you since you and I were 11, I think in 2003, when you were telling me your organizational work.
Yeah.
But really, like that's.
And I haven't updated that look. It's the same one I created.
And there's no reason. And that's, that consistency is helpful for everyone in doing that work because they know what we're supposed to be modeling.
Why should you?
Yeah.
We have a system that works. We have to study and make thoughtful decisions and reflect on those decisions we made. And if they're wrong and we don't like it, it's, let's revise it.
We have a system that works because he doesn't like to take compliments. We have a system that works because you pick a system and you continue faithfully with fidelity to that system. And that's where our growth is coming from. That's great.
Thank you.
Great.
Stay away, Tim. Stay with us.
He's not going anywhere.
Stay with us.
And so I think we have to adopt the plan.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Tim.
It's awesome.
Move to adopt.
Second. All favor of adopting. All right, we're adopted. Thank you, Tim.
I think I have one more thing.
Yes, you know you have testing.
Now we have testing. So assessment report, which is one of my favorite things to do, this will be abbreviated. It doesn't have 70 slides this year. I think I'm down to 40 something.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
This year is a year.
Right, so. Thank you. I'm excited about the assessment report, although I will start with a word of caution, and I'll repeat it several times. We have to interpret these results with caution because of what last year was. And I'll give a couple highlights of why I think we have to proceed with caution. So there's a few areas of data I want to look at. I want to start with our diagnostic assessment that we adopted in 2020 because the New York State tests were canceled. We didn't know if they would have them the next year. We needed some benchmark measurement system to know how we're doing. So we adopted iReady, and we administered that three times in September, January, and then again in June. The January assessment, we only did K5. Six eight was done only in September, in June. And we're going to, and then we have the state tests in April, May, and 2021. So we did those tests. I'll do a little bit of an analysis between those two. The testing timeline this year is similar. September, we're administering the reading and mathematics diagnostic assessment in September. We'll do K5 reading and math in January, and then K8 again, reading and math in June. It gives us some benchmarks to know how students are performing on the grade-level standards and providing intervention services to kids who are falling below grade level. What's nice about a three-time-a-year system is we can monitor and see if students are growing during the year and not wait till the end of the year and actually following your toy that state test results back. So this is something to do in real time. So I'll first look at our iReady reading assessment from last year in 2020, 2021. This graph is showing the comparison between our fall assessment and our spring assessment. And what we're looking for here is the dark green is mid-on or above grade level, the light green is early grade level, and then starting with yellow and red, you get to one more grade levels below. And what we want to see is an increase in the green bars, which we do see here. So in the green, we have 80% in reading, showing some level of proficiency on grade level. We want the small bars in the yellow and the red. And you see that big shift from the fall when we first tested them. Remember, this is coming off of schools being closed in March. We did, we did remote learning in, in March of 2020. So we had high numbers here, but we did make that up. We'll go in and look at the grade level, then also compare this to national data as well to see how our students fare. So while this looks confusing, you have all the grades down here in the fall-to-spring comparison. And at every grade level, you see a big increase in the green bars, which is what we want. And usually, we see a decrease in the red bars. I'll just point out a few things. First of all, we closed the assessment window when the data, the numbers were crunched. So our numbers in kindergarten aren't accurate. The kids were still able to test, and we have data on them. They just weren't factored into this calculation. Just wanted to point that out. We also see this dramatic increase in the green bars in third grade, which shows a huge improvement over the course of the year. Despite the fact teachers were teaching across two classrooms, we saw really significant gains in most grade levels. You see it here in second and first as well. When I meet with iReady, when they crunch these numbers, they meet with me and go over this data, they kept talking about third grade. They've never seen that type of result before. So they were just curious about it. They were asking what we were doing, and I couldn't really tell them anything different.
Is it the same level test fall and spring? Or does the spring test get more challenging because during the spring of the year?
Yeah, so that's a good question. It's different content because they pace out where the content is. So the fall is going to be based on second-grade standards and early-third-grade standards, and then that's tested in the spring is based on the third-grade standards. But remember, it's an adaptive test. So if you're taking the test and you're getting wrong answers around a certain content area, it's going to give you easier answers and then work back up to find that level of proficiency.
And do you get the results very quickly?
We get the student, the teacher gets the student results immediately. So as soon as you finish, I could be looking at your result, and we can start analyzing that right away. These numbers are crunched in this capacity. I get this later from the vendor. So they give this to me like a month after we close our window, at the individual reports. And I have access to look at grade-level data. I can run reports.
So the next time, this may not be right in every situation, but the next time there's, let's say, a curriculum change, so there's a new math approach in the second grade, example, then is there any validity to saying, like, use these tests for a year for half the grade and put half the grade on the new, on a new pilot, and then the other half the grade is the old, and then see, wow, you know, is there a difference? Is there, is there any, like, because now, because with the state test, it was impossible to do that because the lang time is too long, it was too useless. But for this, where you get instantaneous information, seems like there are more possibilities.
Yeah, I think there are more possibilities. I would just have to question whether, well, sometimes when we do pilots, we do pilot them in a couple classrooms when we have pilot teachers on the committee. So we have done that before, and that could be one way to look at this. We do have to recognize this is also just one measurement. And that we never just make any major decisions based on one measurement tool. But there are maybe some opportunities for that. I don't know. There could be other factors. For example, I just want to also point out that this was the first year we've implemented this, and it was the first time our students taken this type of standardized test online because they've been doing state tests on paper. So there could be a lot of factors where these results may not be as accurate yet. I think over a couple of years, when we get used to it and our kids get used to it, that we'll start finding the consistency in this data over time. So I'd probably hold off on even thinking about that for a few years till we get this, we're all comfortable with this assessment.
What it means.
We explain it to the kids. Wow, we, you know, they're comfortable with the testing. We know that they're taking it seriously. They know what it means, et cetera.
When you take, when a child takes a test online, do they have the capacity to go back and review and, like, when you take a paper test?
Yeah, you don't. Yeah.
So that could also factor in.
Remember, it's an adaptive test. So the test does adjust. So if you got something wrong, it's going to, it tries a couple times to see if you're betting that content right. And then if you still don't get it right after a few tries, it goes down to level, and then it starts finding up until it's too hard for you.
But my concern is like with a reading passage, sometimes you'll read a question later on, and then you don't have time, and then you go on to a different reading passage and you start all over, so.
Yeah, these are a little shorter in this assessment. It's not like a long, you're not reading a long piece like on a state test, although at some point, the state's going to go to computer-based testing.
So I guess it prepares them.
Yeah. And that's been a long conversation. I've had lots of conversations with Dwayne about that.
It's also math that's, you know, having, you know.
Using the tools.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's different tools. So those are all factors in this that were, were mine. A few other interesting things noticed here in fourth and fifth grade. We had really reduced the number of students that were multiple grade levels below. Seventh grade, we did not there, so that's curious. Now, I don't know if those are the same students or not, but we do dig into that. We go and look, who are those students here? And then let's pay attention to them, how they do on that fall assessment in eighth grade, so we can make sure those kids are getting targeted for some intervention if they're falling behind. Seventh grade will be a little story tonight in our data, and I'll, we'll see that as it comes up. This compares to iReady's national data. Again, this is reading. So this is Byram Hills here. This is last year, and this is last year nationally by this company. So you can see we more than doubled the dark green, or about doubled the dark green percentage there. We're way above where the national data was comparing COVID year to COVID year. But even looking pre-COVID, this bar here is pre-COVID. It's the year before compared to Byram Hills. And we're still even exceeding what students were doing before the pandemic, which just shows where our students fall, which gave me a little comfort looking at this, that our students maybe are still above the national average on where kids are performing. And this dataset is almost 4 million students across the country. So gave me some good feeling about what we did last year. So that, that was a good number.
Do they use this as a cross-section of schools or is it high-performing schools?
I think it's a combination. I've actually been talking with the vendor about being able to tease out high-performing districts and, or doing some type of regional norms.
That'd be interesting.
And so I've been in talks with them since we bought this a year and a half ago. Can you please look at that?
That would benefit their business.
They are, they are trying to look at that. Because I said, this is important, and I could sell this product. If you can do that for us, I could sell this product.
Daring up the samples.
Exactly.
There's about three good vendors that do this type of work. This is just one of about three that we use in the region. None of them do regional norms then. I'll talk briefly about this. So when you take that fall diagnostic, it sets learning targets for you. So whether you're on grade level, above grade level, or below grade level, the program will adjust some typical growth goals, and you get a growth goal as a student. So every growth goal for every student would be different, and the teacher knows what that is, and the teacher will be working with you to try to meet that growth goal. The goal here is that you want these bars to be at 100% or more. That's the median growth goal for the class, so for the group of students. We also, and that's, the typical growth are the orange bars, and the blue bars are the stretch growth. The stretch growth is going beyond a typical grade year's length of growth. You want to do that particularly for kids falling below grade standards. You want to try to get them to their stretch target because you want to grow a little more than a year. So over time, by the time you get to high school, you're getting caught up with the grade level standards. That's the goal there. So you can see with the orange bars, at every grade level, we hit that typical growth. We didn't quite hit it everywhere on the stretch growth. We weren't really in tune with this last year. It was our first year doing it. I'd be curious to see how we do this year with reaching those goals because now we're talking a little bit more about how much time students need to be attending to these growth goals and working on the interventions. So I'll revisit that in math as well. So let's talk a little bit about math. I'll sort of go a little faster now that you understand the graphs. Again, we see that fall-to-spring growth here and even greater. There's been a lot of research by these types of companies looking at what they call learning loss. I don't like to call it learning loss, but what happened during COVID? And it's a general consensus that there was more learning loss in math nationwide than in reading and literacy. The theory is that kids could still read at home and read with their parents and do writing at home, but math was a little harder for kids to learn outside of the typical classroom.
They may have even been reading more.
Right, they might have even been reading more. So that seemed to be reflected here, although we did catch kids up over the course of last year again. And then, again, this is the grade-level work. Kindergarten, we still didn't get, catch all the kids. What we learned here is that kindergarten kids take longer to take this assessment than we originally thought. We closed the window before and sent this data off to the vendor before our kindergarten.
We couldn't wait for kindergarten to finish.
Yeah, we couldn't wait. We have to work on that.
They're going to pass.
You still see like third and sixth grade, these incredible gains from the fall to the spring assessment.
I actually like to see that number the way it is because it means that we're not pushing this on the, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, our teachers are like these kids.
We're not pushing it on them, right? If they're doing it at their base, and if we can't get them, we don't get them.
Yeah, and this year in the fall, I kept getting calls from the kindergarten teachers. Can you extend the window? I can't finish it. Like, it's fine.
That shouldn't be a stress.
We're not, we're not stressed at all about it. It's fine. And then again, in fourth grade, seeing that decrease in the multiple grade levels below. And again, seventh grade is a story here. We didn't seem to get those kids at the bottom. So we'll, we'll look at that in a moment in the state data. And again, same thing with reading. Our levels here are much higher even than the pre-COVID days, let alone the COVID comparison. And same thing here, seeing close to 100% or more with the typical growth. The stretch growth, we still have some work to do to try to get more kids up to their, their stretch growth goals. So that's the iReady data, which I thought was interesting to look at now that we had one year of administration, and we'll see that again. New York State assessments. We did administer the test last year. There's a lot of copyouts. This data was just released last Thursday. So I just got the data, and I spent a few days crunching the numbers and looking at it and scratching my head about what slides to take out and how much should I present. But I think there's some good things just to remind us that when we were in the pandemic, we were separated by six feet. Elementary teachers were across two classrooms. Middle school and seventh and eighth were hybrid. We intentionally focused our standards on power standards and made intentional decisions to cut some things out of our curriculum. Teachers were learning new strategies. Remote students were not given an option to take state tests. So that's about seven or eight percent of our students who did not take the state test. So that pool is out of the data. We only had one student take one Regents exam. So our results are really good. They got 97 of the English Regents. No other student took a Regents exam at Byram Hills.
Work, system works.
So we're doing well with the English Regents. One student is a good measure of how we're doing. Although our English Regents results were always stellar. The state put out this data on Thursday when they released it. They included this statement. They only had 40% of students take state tests statewide. So as a result, the state was not reporting the statewide results. So I can't compare Byram Hills to the state results and they tell us not to do so. They did publish all the district's results, but they're not publishing the statewide results. So we have no comparison. And they weren't about comparing this year's data to previous years or comparing them to subgroups.
How's the median participation? 71%, but only 40% of the results are available.
Yeah, so the median participation right in the middle. So half of the.
Oh, all the zero, zero, zero.
Yeah, yeah. So there's some that didn't do anything. So really the median is 78% participation. We were up at 84% participation, which this region, when you look at the math, there's a heat map available that a lot of districts in this region in Westchester have high participation rates. But then you look across the state and you see it all over that. It's just very low. So a word of caution, I just want to say one more time when looking at this data that may not be reflective of student achievement and we should not be using this data to compare, although I will do some comparison.
Although it is some good data.
There is some interesting data. So in Byram Hills, we use multiple data, multiple data points. And I just want to assure our community that we look at our local assessments and teacher assessments, creative assessments. We look at observational data. We use screening tools and we make sure that we're meeting students' needs, whether students need to be stretched or whether we need to provide some academic support. Do know that we are using other data points and we never rely on the state test because we got the results so late anyway. But just to assure that we're not just doing nothing this year with data to know how our students are learning. And a reminder that we're looking at the proficiency levels of level three or four on the state data. So here we go. These are our assessment results in English Language Arts in grades three through eight. This is the proficiency level here. So overall between grades three through five, it's 85% of students reaching proficiency. Six through eight, it's 85%. You see the individual grade levels there. I included the mean score in the levels here. So you can see that our mean score always falls either within level three or four. So for example, here at a 619 is about in the middle of level three. So our mean score on that third grade state assessment is at a mid-level three. Whereas you look at fourth grade, our mean score of 622 is at a low level four. So that just gives you a sense. It sort of fluctuates between the grades of where our students are falling. I also wanted to put our number of students who did not take the test for various reasons, whether they were remote, whether they chose not to take the test or were absent.
High number in seventh grade.
High numbers and a really high number here in seventh grade. Overall, these are fairly high numbers. Our participation rate there was at 84, but it's still a lot of kids taken out of the pool. How did we compare last year? Even though we shouldn't compare to last year, it does give us a sense. In ELA, the numbers are dramatically up. An average of 13 points in three through five or six points in six through eight. So you could see some dramatic changes here. Remember, the state tests were shorter. It was just one day. Not sure how much this is multiple times assessing the standards because you can't just really assess one standard on one item. It's not an accurate reading of a, to get a valid result. But you do see an increase in ELA across the board here. It'll be a little bit of a different story in mathematics, but in reading, these were the results compared to 2019, just to give us some sort of measure. So I went and looked at the diagnostic assessment and I wondered how these compare. I have to again caution, it's not necessarily the same group of students because we were able to test the students who were learning remotely on the diagnostic. There isn't way to do that.
That's iReady. When you say diagnostic, yeah, iReady.
The iReady, yes. So we did test the remote students. So we tested more students. So they might not necessarily be the exact same comparison pool. And an on-grade level or above might not totally correlate with the New York State distribution of scores. So I'm just making it up based on what I know about reading, the diagnostic and what type of standards they're calling grade level or above. And this gives us some sense of just where it is. It's better to look at the student level and really go down and compare it. Okay, are students showing on the state test and iReady that they need some intervention on certain areas? Then we would give that intervention. And remember, the state test and the iReady breaks it down by standard. So we can actually go in and look at the standard level to see if, what is it? Reading comprehension or is it phonics? What is it exactly a student needs work on? Because it might not be overall everything. It could be a targeted area. So we try to cross-reference that between the state test and the diagnostic. In fact, today I happened to walk by one of the reading specialists room at Wampus and she was there looking at something and she goes, oh, I'm looking at data. I'm digging into the state data and comparing it to iReady. She was doing this already. So that's, the teachers want to know. They want to help the kids learn.
Tim, I have a question regarding the, the kids that are taking both sets of tests. So iReady versus the state test. Do all the kids take it? I'm thinking specifically about, for example, the kids who have IEPs, who are already getting some sort of academic support. Do they take the state tests or do they generally opt out?
No, no, there's not really. The first year, we had a lot of opt-outs when the opt-out started to really happen. I looked at the spread of the students and what type of student was opting out. It was really a cross-section of students. It was both high-performing students and students with disabilities.
So we don't know that, and they, and they take iReady as well?
Yes, they do.
So that ready percentage of kids that were performing below grade level could be?
Yeah.
Kids who are already getting academic support.
Exactly. Yep. Or in resource room or have other types of, or, or not. And that's why it's just good for us to know who are those kids? And are they already receiving and do they need more support?
But they're included in this, in these numbers.
Yep, thank you. So this just tells me, okay, that third grade number on the state, it was a big jump, but the iReady was also pretty big. So maybe there's some accuracy to that to some degree. I'm not sure. There was a little more discrepancy here in fourth grade. I'm not sure exactly how to interpret this yet at the global level, but at least we can dig deeper into those students falling below and target students that need academic support and confirm with the teachers does a student need support in this area? But it does just give us some type of understanding of how our students are performing this year, which is what we're looking for. And then I thought even more important is to look at the cohort comparison. I always did cohort analysis. So these are the same group, same class of students, not necessarily every individual. But if you look from third grade in 2019 to fifth grade in 2021, looking at the same group of students and seeing what their percent change was. Because the cohort might be different than looking at just a cross-section of the class year to year. That could be very different in composition. Percentage ranks. So the New York State percentile rank out of about 694 districts, we always perform somewhere up in the 90s and often the high 90s, which we have in 2019 and 2021. You do see that jump in third grade, which tells me there's something real happening in third grade with our student achievement because every measure, even when you compare to other districts, is still pretty high. Although this is a year that things could be fluctuating. In Westchester, you see sometimes we're way above where we were last year. We had some growth and other points down. And we're generally around the, yeah, we've had some fluctuation over the years in the LA. Scores have fluctuated a little bit, but we'd like to be up here in the 80th in the Westchester. This is only 40 districts. So just a couple districts. And when you go and look at the mean score on these comparisons, it could be the top, we could be ranked five, but there could be a three raw score difference between those top five or five points or something really close. We're very close in here. So this chart, you just have to look at a little bit with a grain of salt and really go and look at the mean scores because it might not be that big of a difference between the number one ranked and the fifth or sixth ranked. Math, let's look at math. The proficiency levels here in math, 83% proficiency. Remember, we were 85 in ELA. And then 77% six through eight. A couple of cautions here. Eighth grade, these students, we have 77 students not tested. Remember, we don't test the students in Math 8 who are in the algebra course. So you immediately skim off the top 22% of students from this dataset in addition to more students who didn't test as well. So this number is always going to be lower than where we would anticipate it if you brought in the algebra regents and factored that into it, which I've done some analysis on that.
Why do they skim them off?
They just don't have to double, we don't want to double test kids. So if you're taking the Regents exam, we don't want to also give you the Math 8 test. And that was something the state changed it one year. We used to have to double test kids. We no longer have to. So that's why, we just don't want to overtest kids. We could throw them in the pool, but those kids, it's just sort of a waste of three hours for them to take a Regents exam when they're already taking the algebra one. Again, the mean scores are always somewhere either in the level three or level four. And you see high numbers here of the, the not tested students. Looking at the comparison, you do see some differences here. You see some increases, but also some decreases, a slight one there, just plus two at Wampus. You see this big change here at 22 points down from 2019. Not sure what that means. We're going to see some other comparisons in a moment. This is probably lower than it was previously, but probably not that dramatically. And I'll show that in a minute. So, but math being a little down here. Again, remembering our kids were learning in hybrid. So they were only in school part of the time. Maybe with reading and writing, it's a little easier to teach remotely where maybe math was a little harder to really see how kids were thinking about math.
Those are the fifth graders that went out with COVID.
Yeah, so, right. These kids went out with COVID in March. Yeah. So there's a lot of factors that could lead to this. Let's go look at some other metrics comparing it to the diagnostic. The diagnostic is a little bit higher, nine points higher in the state test. Not sure what that means, but it's a little bit higher. You see some consistency in some of these other scores. And then looking at cohort tells a little bit of a different story if you look at the cohort here. So if you're looking at how those students in seventh grade, who only had performed at 65% proficiency in fifth grade, they're down only seven points as opposed to comparing it to the previous years if I go back to.
Tim, say that again.
Yeah. Okay, let me go back. Where was I? So these are those seventh grade students where they only performed at 65% proficiency. In fifth grade, they were at 72% proficiency. So there's only a decrease of seven percentage points.
And now go to the current fifth grade.
Yeah, our current, well, going back to this slide, where that seventh grade group, it looked like they were going down 22 points, but you're comparing it from the pre, from two years ago. You're comparing it to the fifth grade from a few years ago. So it's not a direct comparison of the same kids. These are different kids in the same grade. So the cohort is what we were looking at. It just could be that cohort of a different group of kids than the year before or two years before in fifth grade, which would have been, yeah.
Although you need circumstances every year. I mean, you could have a very strong math-science group one year and a very strong.
Yeah.
Language arts group another year.
And as you recall, I always, that's why I always show cohort dating. I'll go back and look at the cohorts over time to see how the cohort's doing. And what we want to see is cohort growth. We do have to make up ground and that's where I think iReady is going to help us. I think that's going to help us try to change the trajectory for kids who might be lower early on if we can identify those kids and target them and get them to grow a little faster than just typical growth.
Do you think some of this could have been a year and a half of remote and high-performance?
I think so, absolutely. Again, that's why these results, we just have to sort of look at the kids in eighth grade. Now these kids, make sure we're targeting them, make sure we're doing interventions, make sure we're seeing some good growth in those kids getting to eighth grade level. And I'm excited to get our iReady data back and look at how those eighth graders are doing in the fall assessment. And that would get some good data for us. You see seventh grade here in 2021, also when we look at the Westchester comparison, we were up here in seventh grade in 2019. So when you look at that numbers, it was a bit of a shift. So it's just something we're looking at that class and making sure those kids in eighth grade are getting what they need to get them prepared in mathematics. Science, so you see in science, we have 98% of our students are proficient in fourth grade, which is usually where we are in the high 90s in fourth grade science. You do see this high number of not tested here. We don't test the students in our science, so those students are pulled out. And then there were a lot of students who didn't take the science test. On top of that, this is a very low number. We usually perform in the high, in the low 90s in eighth grade. That's our typical number. This is just a very small pool of kids who took the assessment. So just a few other metrics. So that's state testing, that's our diagnostic test. We also want to look at a few other ways, not just looking at standardized testing. Well, we have advanced placement. We do offer 24 advanced placement courses, which over 52 sections of classes of AP, which for a district like Byram Hills and our size is a pretty good number out of about 38 advanced placement courses total. And this is where those courses fall in terms of the content areas. So we offer a lot of advanced placement courses. I just want to point this number out because it's showing that more of our students are taking more advanced placement courses over these five years. So you see our enrollment, this is the Byram Hills enrollment, the blue bars has gone down from 2017. However, you see the number of students in AP going up over the five years and the total number of APs by the gray bar going up. So even though the enrollment's gone down, more students are taking more AP exams. In fact, the average number of exams per student in 2017 is two, where now this last year was 2.32. So there's more students taking more exams. A few more students taking exams.
They can take the exam without, without taking the course?
No. That's rare. Yeah, every once in a while, there's an independent study or something or a rare situation.
I don't understand how.
Oh, multiple.
Multiple.
You're taking, so one kid taking multiple AP courses is what that means. Yeah. Yep.
But we don't offer psychiatry, psychology. But, but we will offer the test if somebody's studied for it.
Yeah. So we'll do that. And it happens occasionally, but that's relatively rare. And then how did our students perform? So this is the, out of all the students taking it, did they score at least one, three on an exam? Usually we're in the low to mid 90s. This year it went down a little to 85%. I, there is not national AP data available for this year yet. I keep looking to see that, to see where we fall compared to nationally. Did it drop off nationally? That would only tell me what this number means. I don't know what it means right now.
And if you looked at fours and fives, if you really drill down to the next level.
Yeah.
Was last year just a tougher year because, or was it?
I think a little bit. If you look at our data and compare fours and fives to previous years, a little bit, yeah. Yeah, but not dramatically. I wouldn't say it was that dramatic. I'd say maybe in a few subject areas more than others, a little harder.
And do they look course by course for this to say, okay, if there's a course XYZ and, and the average is three and a half versus most courses are, you know, at a different level, then tweak the curriculum?
Yeah, oh, yeah. So we get a full analysis of it, a score reports by student, shows the range. And teachers get that information. They look at it, the chairs meet with them, they go over that data. And our goal isn't to have everyone in the course getting fours and fives or even three. We want some kids to get twos in the course. That's okay. We don't want to be that restrictive. There's actually research put out by the College Board that says even if you get a two, you benefit when you go to college. And there's a lot of strong research to support that. Even getting a two on the test, those students do better and take more courses in that subject when they go to college.
Yeah, the thought is we're not excluding the kids because they can't get three, fours and fives.
Exactly.
We want to keep the door open for kids to have that experience.
And just knowing you'll gain from the experience of being in an AP class and being exposed to that content. So you might be in, say, AB Calc. You might get a two on the test, but when you go to college, you then may be interested and do well in your calculus classes when you get there because you've been exposed to that type of level of work.
And then some of the data may be skewed because we've seen many seniors, that's where most of the times they're taking AP classes, they might already be in college.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Well, the seniors. Yeah, but the majority, we do have some sophomores and some juniors taking APs, but the majority, generally a senior could take probably. You know, you could take five APs. And by that point, they're admitted. So that could also skew while we're in the 90s.
That's a really good point. We'll get like junior differently from senior.
Definitely. When kids would come to me when I was math chair, asking if they should take AP Stats, for example, junior year or senior year, I said, take it or junior year. Do better.
Absolutely.
And I would look at that data and it was very clear, you know, the data was different for juniors versus juniors. So we like to have more juniors in the class because it did elevate everybody in the class. So it was just a game we played.
But at the learning level, I mean, generally most seniors are at that.
Yeah, and it depends. It's just people's commitment different. A few other indicators. First of all, a couple of students, this was Friday, last Friday. Our science research students are in the final stretch of finishing their papers. I think in, I think it's 10 days from today. I think it's the 12th. Does anyone know? Do you know?
I should know.
I know, I know.
But I don't know.
I could say.
I think it's the 12th.
Yes, the 10th or the 12th. So anyway, this was the Friday. They spent a full day, a week before, about two weeks out and they're in the lecture hall and they're working hard and they're cranking out. It's great to go in and talk to them. I had the pleasure of reading three papers this year because they were asking for volunteers. And it has to be one of the best parts of my job is reading science research papers and giving feedback to the kids and talking them about it. It's a lot of fun to do. So there are other things happening. This is showing the positive effect of our social-emotional learning curriculum. This was a bulletin board at Wampus and this kid is saying, think positive. And she says, for example, I fell down the stairs today and thought, wow, I sure fell down those stairs fast. The benefit of positive thinking for that student. This student, that was Natalie, Cell, wanting to be one of our future engineers. When I grow up, I want to be an engineer. I want to help the earth and help people. This is what I want to be when I grow up. So these are some of the things that make us smile. Let's look a little bit at our college acceptances. So our 2021 data, we had 65% of students in last year's class get into tier one colleges. It's the second highest over the last decade and a half. And you see that growth from 2006, from 31% to 65%.
It's such a tough year because that might have been one of the most competitive years.
It was a tough year, and you look at tier one and tier two, and we were at 82% last year, tier one and tier two acceptances. That's getting into the top 11% of colleges in the country. And this, I think, is the second highest number. I think we once hit 84% of students.
Just about what, 300 schools?
Yes, yeah, about 300 schools. And attending tier one and two, we had 71%. Last year's class actually attended, so 82 got accepted. And some students make choices to go to different schools, but 71% actually attended. Amazing data. And just to show a chart from our middle 20, remember, this is data we have been tracking for about a decade and a half. We have, you take our seniors and you rank them by their GPA, and you go and look at the middle 40 people, the middle 20% of kids, and you see where they went to college. And you can see that last year in 2020, the blue bars, 100% of that group got into tier one and tier two. And last year, a lot of, most kids did, five who got into either tier three or tier one. That's our middle kid getting into the top most competitive schools in the country, which I think this graph really talks about the value added of Byron Hills education. And I think that's just important data to always look at and look at our success. And science research, this is last year's graduates. And this year's, there's a couple of special kids there, working together in the room on Friday, editing papers together and helping each other. They work together. It's really great to see the collaboration where they support each other. But an interesting metric that we just can never avoid, we had 520 students so far complete this three-year program since 1991. 24% of those students have been semifinalists, which is astonishing. It's just an amazing number. And about 4%, 21, being finalists out of that group. It's pretty remarkable numbers. And if we're looking at metrics, to look at our success, we can talk about test scores. We can talk about all that other stuff. You know, there's other data points to look at as well, such as where our kids end up at the end of their Byron Hills experience. Some things we're working on, continuing to integrate our new data dashboard, looking at some intervention strategies. I keep talking about getting those kids who are at the low end of the data and how we get them up to speed over time. Resuming our K-5 literacy pilot and starting to pick up again with our science and social studies K-5 work. And then one final thing, student performance data. So about 10 years ago, I started to look at how we could develop a system to look at performance data over time. Then we got interrupted with new state standards, new state assessments, and APPR all hit us around 2011. And it detracted us from that work. Couple of years ago, Kim Lappel and I started to work with the academic chairs to look at how we can develop a system of looking at our student performance data to ask ourselves, how do we know our kids are making progress on those really ambitious goals that you heard last month from our administrators? When they came in and talked about, you know, being literate in the 21st century, when they talk about students acting and thinking like scientists, how do we know we're making progress and how do we measure that? So we're trying to develop a system to look at other measures, qualitative measures that we define and measure over time to show that we're trying, that we're achieving these ambitious goals set by each department. Right before COVID, we sort of cracked the nut on how we were going to do this with the chairs. Then COVID hit and stopped that work for a year and a half. We're getting it back up again, so I'm working with Kim Lappel and the academic chairs. And I'm hoping by the end of this year or early next year, to be able to share sort of the way we're doing this and have some examples of it. Conceptually, I'll talk a little more details later when we see it. Conceptually, what we're going to do is, say you're Duane Smithing department and you're getting kids to be literate in the 21st century, and how do we measure it? We would be collecting lots of different data points that we would put together and source examples of from various different sources throughout the district. And then each year, Duane would analyze that work and synthesize it and say, this is what I'm noticing, this is how we're measuring that work, and here's examples of that qualitative work, and here's how I see it falling on some continuum. And then we would do that year after year. And then after multiple years, we analyze that growth. We sort of do a meta-study of analyzing our synthesis over time to then create a story, to look at the patterns of how our students are performing and look at examples of work and actually document that growth on student performance data over time. So in the olden days, we used to Xerox copies of papers and distribute it to the board and look at exemplars each year and talk about them. And then after a while, we thought, we're not really seeing trends and patterns. We're just getting snapshots. How can we look at patterns of data? And how can we look at the depth of it? And how do we measure this qualitative data coming from different courses and different grade levels over time? So we think we cracked the nut on how to display this work and show it and source it. So we're starting to put that together as an example this year in a small way. And if that works over years, we'll start building it up over time. And we'll have this really complex system where you can go in and look at very specific pieces of work. You can, you can search it by 21st century skills, very specific skills, or by content, and look at the multiple ways we're looking at that across the district. So it's exciting work to do. We just picked that work back up this year, and hopefully we can get through it this year and not be interrupted by something else. And that's the data report. And one more is our future president, Jordan. He says, when I grow up, I want to be the president. I want to be the president because I love to learn about politics. I also think I could help America learn how we could treat each other with respect. So hopefully, Jordan will be our president.
I know from what tonight, you know, people in our community.
We're trying to create the leaders of the next generation, and Jordan just might be one of those leaders. So that's, this is why we do our work is, so these are our students and this is what they're writing about in our classroom. So that's tonight's assessment report. Thanks for giving me the time.
Thank you for the very thoughtful report. Yeah, really amazing.
Thank you.
That's a great ambition on the, on the data front.
It's exciting and it is ambitious, and we'll see if it works. We have some good technology tools that are going to help us do it too, and good thinkers.
Anybody else have any questions?
Amazing.
Thanks. Thank you. So, Jen, I think I need to give you the quarter?
Oh, yeah. I would throw it under, but.
We don't want you to do that. What do you have to just do?
No, that's all right. It's just a box.
No signal. And just take a second.
All right, Tim. Thanks for not beating that.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, for superintendent's report, COVID update. I want to talk a little bit about county vaccinations, our Byron Hills COVID-19 MIRAMIS testing, and our current COVID-19 numbers, recommendations that I have made regarding school trips, events, and spectators, and requests, as the public was saying tonight, for some masking benchmarks. This is something that I think the district and the public that was here tonight agree. That we would just like to know. Scott's going to get tired of hearing you say it. What is the plan? We would like to know a plan. So first, let's start with, this is the COVID dashboard from the county. The current cases in the town of North Castle right now, 10. This is some interesting information. And we also have some of our testing that has occurred in 10504. 86.3% who can have the vaccine have had at least one dose. And in Armagh, 76.3% have had two doses. That's anyone who is ages 12 and up who's eligible, which is, I think, a pretty recent number. This is even more interesting. If you look at the population in Westchester, greater than 12 years of age and the percentage who have had at least one dose of eligible individuals, 91.8%. And 81.8, that's as of today, who are fully vaccinated. And then it goes on to give some of the other numbers for other age groups. Interesting, when you get to the percentage of the total population, it is only 79% of the total population because we have students, children up to age 11, 12, up to 12, who have not been vaccinated. Our MIRAMIS testing, well, we're not really getting any positives. I mean, this is kind of amazing.
That's great.
And you might say, well, that's because everybody's not testing every week. You know, you're trying to hit the 20% mark. But if you take a look at actual cases that have occurred in the school district, this is the exact same as, with the exception of one other staff, this is exactly the same as it looked in the middle of October. So over the past two weeks, you know, there's been what? This is nothing, nothing. Very small numbers. We've been very, very fortunate. And now, off of that, a little focus on our kids. We had a great night at Cum Laude. This chapter inducted the top 10% of the class for 2022. Tom Andriello, great, great speech. And Jessica Shaw was elected to faculty membership next year. And congratulations to all of our students there who were in attendance and their families. It was such an enjoyable night and very different in doing it in the theater than we've ever done it before. And so much nicer. It's one of those, why didn't we do this before? But congratulations to our Cum Laude students, and they are on the cover of Focus. Our Authentic Science Research, Tim, can we say enough about them? 41 seniors will be submitting to Regeneron. And we will wait, January 5th is the bathe in breath day, right? That's the day we, yeah, that's the day, that's the day they find out.
What an extensive, it's an extensive process, extensive application process.
Well, yeah. I mean, I'm surprised they can get it back by January 5th.
Jen, can I just add that our science research teachers reached out to alumni and asked if anyone wanted to read papers, and some came in and read and worked with the kids on Friday as well. And it was just a great experience. So it's maybe a new tradition that we, that's great.
And our speech and debate team, I mean, just amazing. Leah Aldia Lustig, All-State Honors from the National Speech and Debate Association. This is given to students who are among the top 1% point earners in the state. And she is number one ranked student in the original oratory and poetry and second improves in New York. And she's the first Byron Hills student to earn this honor since 2012. Pretty amazing. And she and Valentina Marino, first place at Holy Cross and Old Gold Tournament, that I think was in Nashville, if I'm not mistaken. And Leah for original oratory and Valentina for dramatic interpretation. It should be Valentina, I'm sorry. And Amelia Chong and Leah again, and Valentina again, Magnum Opus finals, which are going to be in Carnegie Hall later this year. And these are the areas that they are competing, and it's the first time in art history.
That's exciting.
So exciting. So congratulations to the speech and debate team. I love this. Spooktacular Pumpkins, National Art Honor Society. They were selling these pumpkins for a fundraiser. These kids are unbelievable, and they are beautiful. And they had a great sale. It's just really like showcased their talents. I want to thank the PTSA for a pretty amazing book fair. They were very successful in the buildings and having outdoor book fairs. That BHEF donated pavilion that we have in the courtyard was just such a good place at Wampus for these kids to go look at books and inside and outside. And go Bobcats. Varsity Football beat Hendrick Hudson 35 to 21 in the first round of section one. And they will be playing this Saturday at 1:30. They play Nanyuette, and it will be at Nanyuette. And we are actually getting our new scoreboard, Kelly, when?
Next week's supposed to be delivered. So once we get that out, it'll take a couple of weeks to install.
This might be the last picture of this.
What is going with this?
That's the old, that's the, that's not.
That's not all of it.
What is going with the old one?
The old one's going to be scrap for metal and.
Yeah, we were at another school.
The lower field that has no scoreboard.
What's that?
Can we move it down to the lower field?
Move the old one onto the lower, you know, the one that's next to the turf field that has no bleachers and no scoreboard.
Yeah, but we don't use that for games.
Yeah, we do. The modified games are there, and there's no bleachers and no scoreboard.
Yeah, I would, yeah, that one we've had a lot of issues with in terms of, it's like a light old one. You know, you're going to change it.
Oh, with the board?
Yeah, so it's getting harder.
It doesn't work to them. Let's give the kids Atari.
We can look at another tool. That one, that was.
Like, oh, Kelly, this is.
Yes. It looks good. Yeah, so we could look at something else.
All right, and tennis, varsity tennis singles championships that just are doing an amazing job. Congratulations to Alyssa and Mia, to Chloe and Jenna. And good luck to our group on November 5th. They are going to Billie Jean King National Tennis Center. We wish our team luck. We have tried very hard, numerous conversations with superintendents and with Robert Zayas from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association and Rob Kostagna, everybody really trying to see if we can get at least parents into this venue. I know that another school district was at this venue five years ago for something and said that they actually understand that there isn't room in this ancillary facility for spectators. But we tried to push that as hard as we could, even requesting that they forego their monies that are applied to this facility and go somewhere else, with people offering to pay for other places. But alas, they will play there, and we wish them luck. And we will be live streamed, and I think Chris Walsh is planning on live streaming in the theater during the day for any students who may be able to come down and see the girls compete. So congratulations. I think they're eating Oreos right there. Oh, there's their medals? Fighting their medals? What is that?
That's a good.
Okay, of course, I don't know what that is. Varsity, I could, I could read books. Varsity Boys and Girls Cross Country, Section One Championships at Bowden Park, November 6th as well. And Varsity Cheerleading, sectional championship competition, November 7th. And then congratulations to all of our other fall teams. Great seasons, varsity volleyball, field hockey, girls soccer, varsity boy soccer, and all of our JV teams that competed. Just great, great to see the kids out there. We love hearing noise, and we love seeing them with each other and in this way. So, oop, and that's it. That's all for me.
Thank you for at least attempting to figure out if there's anything we can do. It's really, it's heartbreaking for parents.
It is. It is absolutely heartbreaking. I had two conversations with Robert Zayas this week, and, you know, both times him expressing that it is not New York State Public High School Athletic Association. It is the facility that is not allowing them to come.
Then it's just space. It's just not.
And it's just space.
They managed to get how many people to?
No. As in Arthur Ashe? It's not at Arthur Ashe.
Isn't it on the same complex?
It is, these take place in courts that are next to each other, and there's not a lot of spectator area in these courts. They're ancillary to the big stadium.
The question is, then, why did it play there? I mean, it's amazing to play there, but it's. It's for future years.
Yes, exactly.
Because it's, you know, very bitter, but it's amazing for the, for the team and for the girls.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a wonderful team, so I wish them all the luck.
Me too. And we will be watching girls.
Absolutely. So, and as bad as it is for me, it's worse for grandpa. Who's never talked to me again. So, any other reports? Does anyone want to go again?
No.
Just me real quick, just a follow-up on the Cell Receiver Project. Verizon was here last week taking pictures. We should have those renderings of what it's going to look like in the next board meeting. So again, they're taking, I think, four or five locations, so we'll have an idea of what it'll look like back, back here by the main office, the district office. Continuing my FEMA reimbursement project, that's going pretty well. I'm up to $2.5 million that I would be submitting for FEMA for reimbursement. So again, a lot of paperwork, and I'm hoping it's somewhat fast. I've heard that other districts submitted smaller projects, and actually I've received reimbursement already. So I'm surprised a little bit, but encouraged that maybe we will see some money fairly soon.
Because that money comes directly from the federal government, not like from the state?
Well, it funnels to the state.
That's fine, but they're getting quicker.
So that's encouraging at least. And then finally, budget development. Our finance advisory committee will meet before the next meeting, board meeting, and we'll start the budget process for the 22, 23 school year. So fun times ahead.